Good evening, everybody. Welcome. Welcome to March 11, 2019 Board of Education meeting. Can we have a roll call, please? Here.
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 Here, thank you. The first item on the agenda is written communication. Dr. Beavis, do we have any?
We have no written communication this evening, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we are already at the information session. And first item is student recognition, state diving championships.
Two state champions to recognize tonight? Sorry about that. And Chris, we'll let you dive in.
Oh, my goodness.
Sorry.
He might have taught history at some time in his life. Thank you very much for having me here tonight to introduce our two incredible state champs. They picked up right where we left off last spring when Anieva Michelin won the state championship for the half mile and Jonathan Wilburn won the triple jump. It's been a great fall, it's been another great winter. And Lucy Hogan won the diving state championship back in November. And Robin Abraham won the wrestling state championship just a few weeks ago. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce our head swimming and diving coach, Kevin Auger, and I should say, and our diving coach, Erin Melnick, to introduce Lucy Hogan.
So just to give you an idea of the, how good a diver Lucy is, she was being with us for three years. She came second at state two of those years and won the gold medal this year. She's headed off to the University of Michigan to dive and to go to school, which is a pretty elite academic school, but it's also an extremely elite diving institution. She's not only been a tremendous athlete for us, she's a tremendous leader. She has elevated the stature of our diving program, not just single-handedly, but also helping inspire a younger group of generation coming up behind her. We had another girl that also went to state this year and finalled. And a big part of that, Lucy, you know, really has been encouraging and really showing the younger kids the way to championship level. Thank you, Lucy, if you want to come up.
I just want to say thank you all so much for having me here tonight. It's such a pleasure to be recognized by everyone. And all the support I've received from the Evanston community has been so amazing. And I'm super proud to represent Evanston, so thank you all so much.
Well, Lucy, you are indeed a, yeah, I'm going to give you instructions here in two seconds. The coaches, you two, listen up. But you are certainly an elite athlete at the high school level and we just are going to watch for even more great things as you move forward. I'm going to invite all three of you, we're going to stand, come through, shake hands. When you get to the board president, you're going to get one of our sought-after pins that you've been here tonight. Great job, Lucy. Congratulations, well done. Congratulations. Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Oh, yeah, look at that. Wow. And Mr. Levitino, you're not done yet, are you?
No, I'm not. We, we had another state champion this past winter in wrestling. Ramon Abraham went a perfect 52-0 and claimed the state championship, like I said, just a few weeks ago down in Champaign. And here to introduce him is our head coach, Rudy Salinas.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity, I greatly appreciate it. So in short, our state champion, our latest state champion, set a new single-season record of going 53-0. One more better than the 52. And he's very proud of it. So we have a great tradition here at Evanston from Elijah George and the house he built. So we've been inspired by those guys on the wall. And Ramon is always inspired to be higher on the podium. He is our first three-time state qualifier sophomore year. He had that distinction. He's been a role model, he's a multi-sport, all-state athlete. And it's been a pleasure for him to start to learn the sport, appreciate the sport, and now love the sport. In this short time now, he is now entertaining numerous offers from Division III to Division I opportunities. So we're excited about that. And he is taking advantage of all that. So without further ado, our captain, three-time state qualifier and state champion, 220 pounds, Ramon Abraham.
I just want to thank you guys for having me here. And I want to thank all my teachers and coaches. They've given me incredible amount of support. And without them, I would have probably not been here. So, yeah, thank you.
Congratulations, Ramon. Another elite athlete. And Coach, you come too. You are just on muscle. Look at this guy. Great job.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Coach, congratulations. And while Mr. Levitino is done, we have one more really terrific recognition. I'm going to ask Dr. Shelley Gates to come up. Did I say Doctor Gates? And explain this prestigious award as well. And then to those of you who've been honored, we'll give you a chance to escape after we do the recognitions.
Okay, so it's on our website now, the Wonderful Honor. We are a Project Lead the Way distinguished school. So I want to explain what that is. And all of you know that we've been doing Project Lead the Way for well over 10 years now. ETHS is one of just 15 high schools in Illinois, out of a total of 171 high schools in Illinois, and one of 164 high schools across the nation. And there are literally thousands of Project Lead the Way high schools now to be recognized this year as a Project Lead the Way distinguished school. So just as a reminder, in case people don't know what Project Lead the Way is all about, students in Project Lead the Way develop STEM knowledge as well as in-demand transportable skills that students use both in school and for the rest of their lives on any career path that they choose to follow. Project Lead the Way engineering empowers high school students to step into the role of engineer and adopt a problem-solving mindset. Students engage in collaborative, real-life activities like working with a client to design a home, programming electronic devices, designing robotic vehicles, and developing computational thinking and communication skills for our increasingly technology-based economy. And to qualify for this award, ETHS met the following criteria. We offer a minimum of three Project Lead the Way engineering courses. Of course, we're, we actually offer six and we'll offer two more next year. So we're ahead of the game there. And we also had to have 33% or more of our Project Lead the Way students taking two or more Project Lead the Way courses during their high school tenure. And 70% or more of the students earned a proficient or higher score on their end-of-course assessments, which all students in Project Lead the Way do take at the end of the, at the end of the school year. So that's why we were awarded this and we're very proud. And I just wanted to introduce just two of our, two stellar Project Lead the Way teachers. The others were not able to make it tonight. This is Jeff Toach, this is Tom Springelmeier. And we are very proud to accept the accolades tonight. We're very excited, so thank you.
But you can't escape coming around the horseshoe. Tom, Jeff, and Shelley, please. Doctor Gates? Congratulations, good job. And now we'd like to thank our honorees tonight, as well as your guests, coaches, all of you who've allowed us to recognize these really outstanding accomplishments. And no, you're not required to stay for the whole meeting. Thank you very much for coming this evening.
Thank you. All right. Always great way to start a meeting. Really good. It's always good to see students and recognize those great accomplishments. All right, so we are at item number eight. So we're going to get a great report on our school-based health care center.
Well, we love our school-based health care clinic. And Dr. Holland is here again tonight, as well as Joyce Cia joining her. And so we'll invite them up and we'll have a chance to get the latest update on this tremendous partnership and what our students have available to them.
Okay.
Hello.
So we'll get our slides up. Great. Well, that was kind of fun to see all those students getting recognized, very cool. Okay, so I think everybody knows we're here. We're the health center over at H101. And we're going to do our annual discussion of what we're doing. I think everybody knows we are funded jointly by the high school, the city of Evanston, and North Shore University Health System. So, go ahead. I think everybody has seen this slide a million times before. There are three pediatricians, we all spend about a half a day a week there. We have three nurse practitioners that are about 1.4 FTEs. We have a secretary, a social worker, our registered nurse, an office manager, and a medical assistant. And currently, that job's empty, so we're looking for a medical assistant. Tonight, we thought we'd do things a little bit differently. We wanted to kind of share with you some of our health concerns as providers in the health center. Talk a little bit about the health center's role in addressing some of those concerns. And then I want to talk a little bit about perceptions of the health center within the high school. So, uh-oh, where's the rest of that?
It's coming.
Okay, you can just list them all, that's fine. There's no big reveal.
Yeah, I don't know what they're doing.
Okay, so these are the issues that our staff raised based on, you know, their encounters with students and patients as kind of some of the biggest health issues in the last three to five years for our students. We'll talk a little bit about some of them. And then just talk a little bit about some of the stuff we're doing, but also getting your impressions on these issues and some other issues. So, go ahead. The first thing we're going to talk a little bit about is vaping. I think most people know this is a huge issue among adolescents. Something that's really happened in the last several years. And so if you look at some national data, which I have a slide here, this is from the 2018 University of Michigan survey as part of the drugabuse.gov. And it just shows you the percentage of students who self-report vaping in the last year. The red bars are eighth graders, the yellow bars are 10th graders, the green bars are 12th graders. And so it's almost 40% of 12th graders in the US or in this study reported vaping in the past year. And that can take many forms, nicotine products, marijuana products, or just flavoring products. These are all really bad things to put in your lungs. The nicotine and marijuana levels are much higher than a cigarette or in a regular marijuana cigarette. And the goal of, a lot of these vaping companies are owned by tobacco companies. And their goal is really to make lifelong smokers out of users. This is kind of the gateway. Vaping doesn't smell as bad as cigarette smoke. In fact, sometimes it's hard to smell at all. And so it's perceived as this kind of youthful, modern thing. But in fact, the levels of nicotine are much higher in vaping than they would be in a cigarette. And it gets kids hooked on nicotine and other things fairly early. And really, kids who use a lot of vaping pens and sticks are much more likely to be cigarette smokers and have other drug abuse issues later on. So our goal here, obviously, is to do a lot of education as well as encouraging students to cut back if they're using already. All right, and then, your turn.
Which county has the highest number of cases of chlamydia in the nation? And it's actually LA in 2017, but Cook County has a second. So we are pretty close to LA. And people are saying it's not out there yet on the CDC, but in 2018, we beat out LA. So there is a lot of chlamydia out there. There is also a decent number of gonorrhea and rising rates of HIV and syphilis. And so our role, we're trying to see if we can do more to educate, not just in the health center with our patients, but also in the classrooms as much as possible. Many of you might know about our GYT campaign in April that we've been doing for some years now. GYT stands for Get Yourself Tested, but we also say it means get yourself talking. After talking to many students, we have a youth advisory board, they let us know that there is quite a stigma around just entering the health center. So people, students who are sexually active or thinking about becoming sexually active and may have questions about their sexual and reproductive health, aren't necessarily talking to health professionals about it. They're getting it in their PE classes, they're getting it in their health classes. And so we are also invited by the PE department and wellness department to teach those parts around STIs and contraceptions and really just reproductive health in general. And so we're just trying to do more of that and try and eliminate the stigma around getting reproductive health services.
Okay, next issue we're going to briefly touch on is obesity. I think everybody realizes that the United States and most Western countries have huge issues with obesity. And it starts as early as two-to-five-year-olds. Our obesity prevalence rates in the US are about 14% for two-to-five-year-olds. It goes to 18% by grade school and 20% by high school. Certainly, there are some groups that have higher rates than others, but this is a really huge health issue for most students and most families. The only good news really on this slide is that the obesity rates among two-to-five-year-olds seem to be leveling off in the United States. So hopefully, that bodes well for the rest of the groups. But it's a, it's a big medical concern. Obviously, being obese young increases your rate of being obese later, which increases your rate of heart disease and hypertension and diabetes and all those kinds of things. So again, this is something that prevention is 90% of what we can do for people. If we can really work on eating healthy and having them in control of their healthy diet and their healthy lifestyle, it makes a big difference in long-term health. So that was the kid rates on that slide. These are the self-reported adult rates in the United States. And what you can see is that rates go anywhere from in the 20% range in Colorado and Hawaii up to over 35% of the adult population being obese in some states in the South and the Midwest. It's a big health issue for our students, for their families, and it's something we address in the health center.
And I'm sure this is also not a surprise, but the rates of depression, anxiety, and behavioral disorders are quite high in this age group. And so we have our own social worker, in addition to the social workers that I know work in the building. We also, actually, we have two social workers, I'm sorry. And we try as much as possible to, like, kind of interweave our services with the interventions that we know are already being done in the school. So we do work closely with the social workers, the counselors, and the psychologists, and even some teachers in helping students out, particularly with their depression and anxiety.
Okay, so we have a few questions for the board tonight. Just very interested in your impressions of what you think of when you hear the THS Health Center said. And also to get your impressions on how you think we can do a better job kind of conveying our mission that we're there for everybody, to students, faculty, and staff. So with that, we'll turn it over to your questions and hopefully get some opinions on those questions as well. Questions, comments?
I just want to thank you guys. I come to your meetings, your, the annual meetings. And I really appreciate that you've gotten the student voice connected with the work you're doing. I'm going to tell you that the first thing I think of around the health center is a great place to get your vaccinations. It seems like a good time to mention that, given the measles outbreaks happening in other parts of the country. And my kids took advantage of that. So thank you for that sort of preventative healthcare. And everything else you do, because there are other important things too.
I was going to say, unfortunately, it's reached our part of the country. I think there have been two or three cases of measles in Springfield. So something we all need to stay vigilant about.
Midway, if you went through Midway Airport, I think, you might have been exposed.
Mike?
In the past, you've given us statistics about the number of students that utilize your services and all that. And I was wondering, because it's such a terrific service, I mean, that we're providing here at ETHS. And it's not completely unique in the country, but it's somewhat unique. And it's absolutely top-notch. And always so impressive to hear the list of services that we're providing to so many kids. But I'm wondering, how many more stu, so you must have a profile of the average amount of time or the average type of treatment that one of your patients receives. So using that average, do you have any feel for how many more students we could serve without increasing staff or staff time? In other words, unutilized capacity?
Yeah, we have some, you know, it's seasonal, right? In the summer, sometimes that's our busiest time because we're doing physicals and things. But other times of the year, we're busy with illnesses. So the capacity varies month to month, season to season. You know, we probably are at least 75% full every day. So there's some capacity. We couldn't double what we do. And actually, part of our rate-limiting factor is space. We only have three exam rooms. So we could probably recruit more people to come in and see more patients, but we don't have the rooms to see them in. We've tried to be creative with that a little bit, too. We, there are actually two sports medicine doctors that seasonally will come in and see athletes and some other folks as well. And so they come right after school and that's a, we can stretch out our space by using it at off-peak times. And then we also have an acupuncture.
Well, and my reason, just for asking, is if, to the extent we have excess capacity, if we could find a way to sort of carefully target students who might benefit greatly from this and sort of market to them so that without increasing, because I know budgets are an issue and all that, without increasing our costs, if we've got excess capacity, could serve more students? Because, you know, it'd be great.
Absolutely. You know, we're working on methods of doing that, obviously, outreach. But also, as Joyce mentioned earlier, like the Get Yourself Tested, we're trying to expand that to as many students as we can in the high school. But you're right, you know, kind of getting the word out there, understanding people's concerns, understanding the things that keep students out the door like they think that, what people are going to think when they see that walk in the door. So we've got to keep working on that.
Yeah, we are trying to be more intentional with our outreach and show up in the classrooms and go to various particular student organizations that we know might utilize our services more. But we have some capacity.
Overall, just terrific job. It's always really impressive to see what we're able to provide. Thank you.
Well, yeah, I want to add thanks from my colleagues because I think you guys are doing a great job. In answer to your questions, though, I think, when I think of this health center, I think of prevention. And I think to the point that you're suggesting that there's some stigma about showing up at the door because maybe you're trying to get tested or whatever. I would, and maybe you do this, so I apologize if I'm not in the know. But just the promotion of the prevention side might get more traffic so that it takes away the stigma for the kids who want to slip in for something that they may be a little more embarrassed about. Because the fact that you do physicals for sports and the required physicals for schools and all of those things are available to promote that with parents and students, I think would be a, you know, and again, you probably do some and you probably do a lot, maybe. But the more you can get people to think of it as prevention, I think it just de-stigmatizes some of the more private things that people might be concerned about that are keeping them away. But anyways, great job, so thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Monique?
Yeah, I agree, thank you. I think this is a very unique and wonderful partnership that we have. To answer your second question, I would say start before they get here. I think, you know, if there's any opportunity when the high school goes into the middle schools in eighth grade to talk about the different courses or even when the middle school kids come here for the athletic fair, what have you, then there may be just letting parents know. Because as a parent, I didn't know until I was here. And then I was like, ooh, you know, a bonus, you know? But, but prior to that, it's sort of, you enter already with that in your mind and it's another resource. And it's easier to convince your freshman to utilize the service than it is your senior. So I would just, yeah, I would think about it earlier and in just different, unique opportunities that you can just, you know, gravitate to.
We do a lot to try and recruit our incoming freshmen, but I'm sure more could be done, like, actually in the middle schools.
We'd like to also try and coordinate some of our outreach to the staff as well. You know, maybe get into that, it's the beginning of the year, right? We have a lot of students that come to us because the staff member knows that we're there and that we can help that student. And they oftentimes bring the student physically in, which is great.
On the flip side, there's a lot of staff that don't know about what we do.
So we're working on ways to try and become a little more prominent, maybe at the beginning of the school meetings and those kinds of things when school's getting up and running, so.
I wanted to say something.
Jude?
Thanks, guys, for the phenomenal work that you're doing. I think of access, especially for the underserved demographic populations here in terms of health care in our community, Black and Latino communities. My question in particular is about the anxiety and depression and its relationship to trauma. And can you tell us a little bit about what you've learned, what your data is showing, and how have you been able to partner with stakeholders, families, other groups and organizations that may provide information so that you can inform your care based on the trauma that leads to the anxiety and the depression?
So our social worker also is the co-chair of the Health, Safety, and Wellness Action Team for Cradles to Career. And so she's hosted a number of parent workshops to address ACEs. I don't know if anyone is familiar with ACEs, adverse childhood experiences, and also help Evanston become more of a trauma-informed community. And so she does that also with her patients individually.
And there's some good resources out in the community, too, that, you know, we can link students to as well to kind of get them to a more specialized service that maybe would serve them better. But it's a good question, thank you very much for raising it.
Phoebe?
I kind of wanted to address, like, the flip side of that and kind of talk about, because like, when we were listing those, we talked about like substance abuse and like vaping. And also then obesity, which are kind of like the flip side, like, the effects and like the symptoms of depression and anxiety and how like, like eating habits change and like, people can like lean on, they can lean on vaping, but they can also lean on things that are a lot like harder substances. And I was just wondering if there was any type of like education about that, about like healthy ways to cope with like anxiety and depression?
Great question. So we do a lot of screening when students come in for well visits, depression screenings, screenings about their eating habits. They have a three or four-page questionnaire that they fill out every year so we can kind of at least get some basic information. So we start there. And then based on what the students' questions are and based on what we see and what we feel like we really need to address, you know, that certainly happens within checkups and physicals and other things. So we do try and work on that.
We also have a student group where students can come in once a week and they'll get a free healthy lunch and learn several ways to cope, like exactly that, ways to be mindful and ways to cope with stress.
And we're always looking for more students to be on our general advisory board. I mean, that's a voice that we don't hear very often. And I think it's, it'd be really great for us to have more student input.
Agreed. Thank you.
So I appreciate you as well. I think it's, it's really a great resource that we have. When I think of the health center at ETHS, that's what I think about, the resource and the connections that you make with other resources in our community and how you can serve students and their, by sending them to places where they can really get a lot of support in the community, that you can get to know them, you get to know their needs and their families and really do. that you can get to know them, you get to know their needs and their families and really direct them really well. So I just think it's really a great resource. I love the suggestions that my colleagues made. I think prevention is really great and really reaching out to staff. And you said that you are targeting specific classes and times of the year when you can go out and talk to the students. So you're doing some great work. Thank you so much for being a part of ETHS. Every time I see you, I just feel pride. Really good. So thank you.
And thank you all for your support. We wouldn't be here without you.
And I just have to point out, Dr. Holland is our founding physician of this clinic.
Been here a long time.
And Julie, how many years, Julie?
Since February nineteen ninety-six. See, right on the bottom of the slide. Yeah, we opened in February of nineteen ninety-six. And there's actually four staff members, myself, Shirley Henry, who's our secretary, Kathy Swartout, and Julianne Russell, who are two of our nurse practitioners that have been here since the beginning as well. So we're all getting a little older.
It's an amazing legacy. And Dr. Holland has a thriving practice. My grandsons couldn't even get in at the time because they weren't accepting new patients. And yet she continues to give this time to ETHS.
I think that might change, Eric.
But it's really admirable that you continue to make this commitment to that. And Joyce, we're just thrilled to have you as part of the team.
Joyce has been a fantastic addition. She joined us three years ago?
Three years ago.
Three years ago. We're incredibly lucky to have her.
It's worked out great.
I will say, since you brought up Dr. Holland's practice, we are at an advantage because we get to spend a lot more time with each of our patients. It's not just a fifteen-minute visit. We do try and be as comprehensive as possible and address any underlying issues that we see come up.
It's fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Great report.
All right, moving right through this agenda, we are at the update on career pathways and youth employment.
And that'll be Doctors Davis and Gates.
Would you like a pin? Great.
Okay, good evening again. I've given a presentation about career pathways, career in tech ed. I wasn't really sure exactly, I know this is gonna be kind of a shorter version of my presentation. What I wanted to do, and Dr. Davis and I discussed this, is just to give you a quick overview of the whole concept of career pathways at ETHS. So we're basically gonna touch on all the things on this slide. Career and tech ed courses and programs, which is obviously the department that I am the chair of. And then also talk a little bit about the career pathways programs and study guide which has been provided for you. And then do a little promotion about the career options night and work it week, which is all happening this week, which is very exciting. And then that's basically what we're doing. Sometimes it's difficult for, well, because this is the world that I live in. And sometimes it's hard for me to know, what do people know about career pathways and what do they not know? What I decided to do is just put a visual up there. And that, the visual really is reflected in the handout as well. These are the career pathways that are recognized by the state of Illinois. And as you can see, it starts up there with the agriculture, food and natural resources. And in the book that you have, and we'll talk about that in a second, there are pathways to a multitude of careers within each one of these career areas. We in the career and tech ed department and also in fine arts, because there are some fine arts courses that fit in some of these pathways, we basically try to have courses in every one of the pathways so that students have the opportunity to see if that pathway is the right choice for them. And part of our goal is to have not only sort of entry-level courses so that you can get a sense of you like it, but then to provide opportunities for students who are interested to go more deeply into a particular career pathway. So those are our career pathways. I mean, there is, if someone else has, you can click in and see the career and tech ed core sequences, which is also in your packet. This is on the ETHS website, obviously. And then, of course, if someone wants more information, they can look into, what is it called? Our, the core selection guide, do we still call that? We do? Oh, good. Okay, we changed names and I've been here for a long time. So, but there's a lot more information, obviously, about specific courses. But this is just to give everyone an idea of what the courses are that we have at ETHS that fit in a particular pathway. Another thing I would like to point out is that the students in ninth grade and also in tenth grade, they do participate in some activities through Naviance and through our ICAP system, where they are doing career assessments to give them an opportunity to understand a little bit more about which one of the pathways might be right for them. I would like to see us do more of that and to have more integration of the assessments and the exploration that students do, so that they are getting a really broad experience to understand which pathway might be right for them. So that's pretty much, is there anything else I left out about pathways? You know, sometimes I'll, you all invite me to come and I talk very specifically about the courses that we have, but I'm not gonna go into as much detail. But please feel free to ask me if you have questions about our courses. And then the next thing that I was gonna talk about is this wonderful book, which is also online. So you can access this at, in the, on the ETHS website as well. The career pathways, and as it says on the slide, the way that this is designed, and many, many high schools have a pathways programs of study guide now. And it's very closely aligned to what the federal government is asking us to do, the Carl Perkins Act, career and tech ed in general. But also the ESSA, which is looking at college and career readiness for students now. They are looking for schools to have a guide like this because what we're really trying to do is help students understand how their career interests may actually be connected to the courses they take while they're in high school. And as you can see, every one of the pathways in this book includes all of that information, the bullet points up there. A recommended for your high school course plan, recommended pathway or elective courses. And we are trying to move away from the idea of the courses being called electives and call them pathway courses, because for some students, they really are very important to their future plans. And I think by calling them electives, they seem like, well, you could take this or that, it doesn't matter as much. And I like the terminology of pathway because it's really important for students to build a pathway to whatever they're gonna do when they leave here. There's also in each one of the pathways, there are, there's a list of career options. And I think this is where we're really trying to move away from just having the college for all language. We're talking about career options that include, careers that include either, that require an industry credential, an associate's degree, a bachelor's or a higher degree. And as you all know, in a variety of careers, for example, healthcare, there are careers that require a certification. There's also careers that require a PhD. They are all in a health career pathway. And if you have, if you're a student who's interested in that pathway, it's really important to see all the different entry points and the ways that you can move through a career path in an area of interest. It's kind of like just a different way of thinking about what your future options might look like. Also, each one of the career pathways also includes possible post-secondary majors. It recommends extracurricular activities. And then there are links in here to a variety of career resources. So I think this is a beautiful guide and I want to give credit where it's due, which is Michelle Vasquez, who works in our College and Career Center. She is amazing and she updates this every year, makes sure that it's accurate. And I think she did a really good job with it, so I'm glad to share it with all of you. So, okay, next, did I leave out anything about that?
I was just going to add that it's, as a parent and the assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction, I find this to be an invaluable guide to the ETHS course selection process. And it's never too early to ask your student what they want to be when they grow up and then you have the pathway document here all the way through.
So please feel free to look through it and we would love to have feedback on it as well. If you see something in there that doesn't make sense or think some ideas for how to improve it for the future, we would really like that. And this is, the next slide I have here is, and I also, this flyer is included for you as well. You all are very much welcome to come and join us at our career options night. This is the second year for this event. Last year was our first time we've ever done this. We have, I don't know what the number is at this point, but the exhibitors, it's just an amazing list of people who are interested in either hiring our students right out of high school, having them enter apprenticeship programs, job training programs, short-term training programs. It's an amazing array of exhibitors. And the whole point of this, and again, organized primarily by Michelle Vasquez, who is, I mean, she has done so much work on this. Also withheld from Arisale Conchola, from the counselors, we have Rotary volunteers, and also the involvement of the Mayor's Employer Advisory Council. This event is really targeted to young people who may be interested in professional careers that don't require a four-year degree. And like I said, the focus will be on apprenticeships, on-the-job training, short-term training, two-year associate's degrees, certification. And you can see, I don't have, I didn't want to put all the exhibitors up, but you can see it's a pretty high-powered list of exhibitors. Both of the hospitals will be here, Union Apprenticeship Programs, the carpenters, the pipe fitters and the plumbers, Dumpster Auto Rebuilders, Dick Peach, everyone knows Dick Peach, he will be there. AT&amp;T has some entry-level positions. The Evanston Community Bank and Trust, both the fire and the police departments, the Work Ethic Program, the Evanston Minority Business Consortium, Let Us Entertain New Restaurants, Oakton, Year Up, the Youth Job Center, and then a large number of manufacturing companies. There are so many opportunities in advanced manufacturing right now that we will hear a lot about that at the career options night. And Ward Manufacturing will be there. They have already hired some of our ETHS grads who are now in apprenticeship programs and doing really well. I think there will be two young men from Ward who graduated from ETHS and they'll be there kind of talking about their adventures over there. And also GF Machining, ICAT, which is sponsored by the German-American Apprenticeship Organization, and also S&amp;C Electric, which is across Howard on Ridge, but we count them as close enough to be involved. So that's who will be there. And if you know of young people, it's really not just for ETHS students. It's for anyone, young people, eighteen to twenty-four, we're also really targeting them. And we are hoping to have a really good turnout because it's a really great event. So if you know people to invite, we would really appreciate that. It's really a fun event.
No, it's a great event. I attended last year and it's growing. This is a substantial list. And I would just like to take just a second to thank Tom Ward over at Ward Manufacturing for really being a trailblazer in providing pathways for our kids right out of, right out of high school, right onto the shop floor, and then supporting them through certification programs and really creating a career path over there at Ward Manufacturing. He was really a trailblazer in that work. I just wanted to add that piece.
Yes, slightly reluctant when he first got started. So I want to, I mean, that's why what we're really trying to build in Evanston, and that's why Tom Ward is so important, is he is such a great spokesperson for what we're trying to do. But he had a lot of trepidation at the beginning because he hadn't really worked with high school kids before. We weren't quite sure, you know, what would our partnership look like? What would he need to do differently perhaps in his workplace? And it's been an amazing experience, both for our young people who are working there, but also for him and their whole company. They've really been energized and so enthusiastic about the talent of the ETHS students. And also just seeing them as the future of their workforce, which is really important in Evanston. So that is that event. And then I just wanted to also give you, you can't see the blue too well, but basically during this entire week, it's work it week, which is kind of connected to the career options night. But I just wanted you to also know that Michelle organizes other opportunities for students during the school day. They can sign up, just like they can sign up for a college visit in the hub. They can sign up for Superior Ambulance, is gonna be here tomorrow. The Evanston Wee Program, which is Hecqy's program. They will be here, also Year Up, which is an amazing program that trains young people in the technology fields. The City of Evanston Fire Explorers Program. And then the Youth Job Center will also be putting on some additional workshops to prepare students for the Mayor's Youth Job Fair, which is coming up on Saturday. So this is like a really big week for getting your work on, okay? So anyway, that's, I just wanted you to know, we also do some things, and when I say we, I mean Michelle. So if you see her, tell her awesome job that she's doing. And then I also wanted to just include, kind of like a way to round the whole thing out, there is a lot of research that shows that young people having a job during high school is a very critical and important part of building their future career plans, but also building a lot of the skills that they need to be both successful in the workplace but also in college. So having a job while you're in high school is an awesome thing. And it has gotten increasingly difficult over the years for high school kids to get jobs. So that's why we are lucky that in Evanston, we have such a huge commitment from the City of Evanston that, and they put on the Mayor's Summer Youth Employment Job Fair and then provide an incredible array of job opportunities through partnerships with employers in Evanston and the city itself. And also Evanston High School, we hire some young people through the program as well. And this is an amazing thing that we have here in Evanston. So I just wanted to also point that out and also to encourage young people to come to the job fair, which is also, which also, of course, takes place here at the high school. So that will be on Saturday. So this is a big week for us, so. And then we wanted to, Pete and I wanted to talk a little bit about the Mayor's Employer Advisory Council. And I don't know how many of you are familiar with this, but it is part of Mayor Hagerty's Elevate Evanston Initiative. And it was a call to action in 2018, recognizing the wealth disparity in our community that slowly pushes out families and reduces diversity because of the cost of living in Evanston. That was really kind of where the Mayor's Employer Advisory Council, it came from that need and the idea of being able to provide high-quality jobs for Evanston residents, young people, so that they can stay in Evanston and actually live here. MEAC currently has a roster of eighty-seven members from many areas, including employers, elected officials, representatives from ETHS, workforce development agencies, and Oakton Community College. And I would just want to point out that, or just to mention that over the past year or so, MEAC has organized worksite visits for members, including Pete and myself. And what became apparent to all of us is that local employers in many of the career areas have career pathways, beginning from entry level and with advancement opportunities. And these employers in Evanston are struggling to find qualified applicants. So there is right now this big mismatch going on. And it became very obvious to us that this is a huge opportunity for young people leaving ETHS if they are not going to a four-year college or if they will be going to college later or if they have a very strong career interest and they're interested in having an employer pay or if they have a very strong career interest and they're interested in having an employer pay for them to go to college. All of those things are possible through these, um, many of the opportunities that the employers in Evanston provide. There's a wealth of opportunity here. And I think we were shocked by how much is going on that we didn't know about. And that's a really important part of MEAC.
Yeah, I, I just want to add that, um, in the literature, sometimes it's refu- referred to as having, uh, BA blinders, which is you assume that everyone has a bachelor's degree out there, err, in certain roles. And as we went through all of the, to all of these employers, my assumptions were that everybody had a BA.
At least.
At least, and then you find out that that's not the case, that there's a lot of training and support provided and career ladders for folks in these, uh, in these positions. So for me, it was a real awakening of opportunity right here in the community, uh, for our youth to not just have dead-end minimum wage jobs. That wouldn't work. And this is one of the things that Shelley and I said over and over again in the meetings was, if you were going to partner in MEAC as an employer, you really needed to demonstrate a career pathway that you could enter in and you could advance within the company and make a, uh, as a pathway to, uh, financial, uh, stability and success. And that's, it's been a real journey and we're looking this year to really put graduates into those positions, into that pipeline to actualize that. That is huge, it's game-changing and I, it was just a really great summer of travel here in Evanston to go into these employers.
Right, a lot of fan trips.
All different sectors of the, uh, employment.
Yeah, so that was really a gift to us because I think it really helped us understand a lot more about what, um, what we can be doing for young people at ETHS. Um, it, it, it really kind of got us, um, kind of hyped up about it. And so I'm excited to continue to work with MEAC. I also think it's important to point out that another part of what MEAC is really going to be focusing on is reducing barriers to employment by supporting best practices in hiring orientation and then supporting staff once they're hired. And I think that's a really important part, um, even our experience with Ward Manufacturing. A lot of employers are not, um, as comfortable working with young people and may, um, need to adapt some of their practices in terms of how to orient young people, um, provide mentorship to them and encourage them to get on a pathway and solve problems with them as they face them when they're first in the job market. So that's something that I think MEAC is very committed to doing as well. So I thi- I think tho- that's a really, um, wonderful opportunity for our community, so. Um, and then I just have one last slide and then you can ask questions. I always like to show pictures and these, I mean, it's, I, I take pictures all the time and I put them in my Friday notes every week, so the administrators see them. But, um, these are just examples of students doing, uh, what we have them do in Career and Tech Ed classes. Uh, presentations, the one on the corner is a, um, architecture competition that students just participated in. In the, the lower, in the corner that looks very crowded, Futures Day, Future Engineers. Um, that's a girls' day that they put on at Oakton Community College. Fantastic, it was so empowering. The young women got to meet, uh, tons of amazing women who work in STEM fields. In the center are some students who are in Advanced Child Development, who went and taught financial literacy lessons at, um, elementary schools in District Sixty-five. Then over on the other side, another presentation that is a first go-around for our Algebra and Entrepreneurship students who were able to pitch their initial business ideas at something called Spark Shop, which is in Chicago. It's an in- innovative workspace. And then, of course, up in the corner, it's, um, our culinary students preparing the soup and serving it at Empty Bowl. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of sense of what students are doing every day in the Career and Tech Ed Department. And you all are, of course, welcome to visit. Come by sometime and see some of the cool things we're doing. So that's all I have for you. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Pat.
So, um, thank you, this is awesome, and I love this handout. And I particularly like these two-page spreads.
Yeah.
Um, because, and just for my colleagues, like page six to seven, eight to nine, et cetera. So I think what, you know, when, in the dark ages, when I was in high school, um, there was, choices were made for kids, right? And some kids were going to college and some weren't, and their paths were decided for them. And what I love about this is the complexity of it, that this isn't about any one path, it's multiple paths. So just looking at the, so I don't know if, if this is online, you said it was.
It is, absolutely.
So for anyone who is watching, I mean, this is really exciting to see what classes you take. And it's not just career and tech classes, but it's the English classes and the history classes you should take, the activities you might get involved in, the kinds of careers that you might have and what degrees, and, and all degrees, from a certification to associates to a, a, uh, bachelor's or more. So the complexity of this just speaks to the depth of it, that this is not something other than what we have for the rest of the kids at ETHS. And I think this is so, so amazing. And I, I mean, obviously, I know you've done this work for a long time and so I, I applaud you.
Well, I appreciate you saying it, it's great to hear, that's a great way that you just, that's exactly how I would describe it.
Yeah.
Um, and it, I, thank you for saying that.
No, this is, this is phenomenal. And I just, the richness of it, that this applies to every kid that goes here. And I love that, and everybody has a place. And it does give you a lot of information about how you could, because you're right, not everybody goes on the same path to anything. So you're really documenting that in terms of how kids get from K-12 education to their next phases of their life. So this is fabulous, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Well, I will pass that on to Michelle, too.
(laughing).
Thank you.
You can take a little credit, Shelley.
Little bit, it's mostly her.
Phoebe.
Um, I really quickly wanted to, um, address the Mayor's Youth Job Fair and I know that that has a lot to do with, like, um, city initiatives. But, um, my sophomore year, the summer between my sophomore year and my junior year, I got a job through that, um, waited in line for a few hours, but it all worked out really good.
Good.
Um, I worked as the Assistant Public Health Educator, which was like a really good, um, introduction and also just like sounds kind of cool, and I, I really liked it, um, it was a really good job. And I'm also planning to attend this Saturday. Um, and I highly encourage that any student who is interested in getting a job also go. Um, there's like a plethora of opportunities, um, for all students, whatever you're interested in. There's, there's definitely something out there. Um, and also just like applauding the advertising within ETHS, like every bathroom I go, every hallway I see, like, there's, there's a poster, so, um.
That's good to hear.
Yeah, I just wanted to applaud your efforts, yeah.
That's great. And ca- so can I ask you a question? When you first, uh, when you waited in line and then you were interviewing, did you feel prepared for the interview?
Um, yeah, so I, during that time, I was in a class, I was in, um, sports marketing and we had, uh, Ms. Bolitan, I don't know if she still works here, but she's incredible. So she cl- she came into our class, um, and kind of like walked us through.
And she works for the Youth Job Center?
Yes, yeah, so she, so during that time, um, she like, she came into our class and like, ex- like walked us through the resume process, um, and made sure that we were prepared for that. Um, so I would say I felt prepared because I had that experience. Um, I'm assuming that that experience would also be similar to if a student went to one of like the many preparations.
Right, so the Youth Job Center has a lot of workshops for students.
Yeah, workshops, yeah.
Before school, after school, during lunch periods, um, really trying to make sure that kids are prepared when they actually then, I think you can s- jump to the head of the line a little bit, too, if you do a Youth Job Center thing first. I mean, I think they try to give some kids some incentive to come, um, to get the skills. Because you wouldn't want to wait in line for two hours and then not quite hit the interview, so. So that's good, I'm glad that you felt prepared.
Yes.
It's awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
And I just want to put in another plug, you already mentioned it, but I, I want to lift it up again. Because now the Youth Job Center, through the Mayor's Initiative, is going to have a job placement person, uh, who will be located right here at the high school. So it won't o- not only be all those services that, that you, uh, enjoyed and, and benefited from, Phoebe, but literally, somebody will be here at the school placing students in jobs in the community. Uh, and, and, and not, not only while they're attending ETHS, but, but, but post-ETHS jobs, so that they're actually entering career, those who want to enter career right after ETHS will have, be assisted in having job placement through the high school, thanks to this initiative. So I loved when you were lifting that up because I'm a big fan of the Youth Job Center. Uh, and, and to know that there's even another dimension now, uh, that, that's underway is pretty exciting.
Well, this is a big week for you.
There's a lot going on this week, yes.
There's a lot going on this week and it's only Monday, so.
It's only Monday.
The report was timely.
The report was timely.
But it's all great, it's good, it's good stuff. So we, we're actually feeling very excited and exhilarated about the level of activity and the support and feeling like we may have, um, some new ways to talk about what we're trying to do.
Sure.
Um, because I do think we have the potential of reaching all the students at ETHS in terms of them making their connections with their futures.
Yeah.
So it's pretty exciting stuff, so thanks.
Thank you, exactly. Good luck.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Beavis.
Great job.
Okay, so, we are at item number ten, textbook adoption and deletion, deletion proposals. Where's Dr. Beavis? Oh, there he is. Hiding. Okay.
So I'm just going to walk through, uh, the report just briefly and, uh, highlight a couple of things. Uh, the process for textbook adoption is, uh, the same process, you know, we consistently follow this. We establish priorities and a budget, uh, we identify needs in the classroom, uh, teacher recommendations, department chairs work together. Uh, they bring those recommendations, uh, to Curriculum Forum. There's a board presentation and then there's board action. Here's the rapid chart, again, this is just a way to sort of memorialize the process in terms of who recommends, who has to agree to it, who performs at our book distribution. Uh, folks order the books, uh, once they're approved. Uh, and the decision, of course, for textbook adoption is, is one of the board's functions. This is so exciting that the, the forums include copyright date, cost, and they assess materials. Uh, don't get too excited about this, uh, we have the lowest adoption cost to date, it's thirty-three thousand dollars. I want to point out that last year we spent a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. This is not a trend. This is an outlier. The reason is we don't have a major textbook adoption this year. We're not adopting biology books for six hundred students or, or things like that. Uh, or a U.S. history textbook for seven hundred students. When we do adopt texts like that, we see costs like a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. When we adopt a couple of those, we see a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. When we don't adopt any of those kinds of big purchases, we see something along the lines of thirty-three thousand dollars. Uh, this year, uh, we had our book distribution manager retired and we figured it was a good time to do an audit. Uh, so what we did was we, uh, looked at books in the bookroom. Uh, we looked at books that were in classrooms. Uh, we looked at books that had been donated by the Evanston Public Library, by the Family Action Network, books that were used as, uh, annotated consumables, uh, books that were piloted, and we tried to really get our hands around those books. Uh, you'll see, you know, Citizen is on there, that was a public library read. Uh, and they donate, we get donations of, you know, three, four, five hundred texts. Uh, they're given directly to teachers. We really want to get ours, get ourselves around this, uh, so that everything is approved. Uh, doesn't mean we're going to take these books and purchase them. It just means that they are in some type of circulation. Uh, you'll see the Westmore book is up there, the other Westmore was another book that fell into that where we received boxes and boxes from, uh, from different, different folks, uh, in town. Uh, so we really wanted to figure out a mechanism to, A, audit those, make sure we had an accounting of them. So you'll see here there are nineteen texts, and this is over probably a twenty-year period. So we really wanted to kind of get a handle on what's sitting in the bookshelves in the classroom that is being used, uh, not in the bookroom specific. So we went out, we did an all-call to our teachers, we said, hey, what books are you using? Uh, let us know, that are books that are not being distributed through the bookroom. The bookroom is aware of a few of these books because they end up there. Uh, but the vast majority of them now are going for formalized approval. Uh, we also, in terms of just straight adoptions, we have twelve texts, uh, that we're adopting in CTE, Fine Arts, History, PE Wellness, Science, and World Languages. Uh, this is a thank you to everyone who participated in the process. Uh, you see teachers, department chairs, Richard Alexander is our new book distribution manager. Uh, the staff in the textbook distribution center. My, uh, secretary Liz Johnson is instrumental in, in running this process. Uh, curriculum fori- forum members and our CFO, Mary Redino, without whose support and help and understanding that this is an outlier allocation, uh, and not a trend, uh, we'll be sitting over there next year saying, yes, we'll do that big adoption. Much appreciated, Mary. Questions?
We heard you. All right, questions, Gretchen?
Yeah, I, I, just a, hopefully a quick question. The, um, slide you showed with the audited list of books, that one? So I, I'm curious, it's kind of fun just to see what's getting read and what I may have read or not read myself. Um, but I'm wondering, it, you know, all the books that we normally approve, including the ones that are on that separate list of books we're approving tonight, we get that nice little one-pager that tells you, um, not just the ISBN number, but the.
Little review.
Things like, yeah, equity, you know, how is this relevant to equity? Does the middle school use it, um, so that we're not doing duplicative things? With this list of books, are we doing that? And shouldn't we?
Uh, we should going forward, we're not going to do it with this initial list, but we should going forward. This was a list that.
I, I just, I, I feel like, you know, if it's important enough.
Right.
I- i- if these are books that our kids are going to be handling, just like any other book.
Right.
Um, it, it should go through that process. I mean, we have a, even, you know, I get that these trickled in in all these strange ways. Um, and, and frankly, I th- I was pretty sure we actually did approve The Immortal Life of Henrietta Lacks because I thought that was a component of some classes quite a few years back.
Some classes did use that, that was in conjunction with the NU, uh, Big Read.
Right, right.
That's how those books end up here, right? You do the NU Big Read.
But I think that was on our formal list, anyway, neither here nor there. I just, it, it seems to me, you know, we could end up with a pile of rejects from the library that really aren't great.
Right, right, right.
And I don't purport to know what all these are. I, I recognize a large number of them and I've even read some. But, um, you know, we don't, we don't want just a pile of rejects from the library. I, we want stuff that is relevant, that, that passes the review process we have and that it, that it's a, uh, not just on the equity front, but that it challenges our students at an appropriate level, that we're not bringing in kind of the old edition and the.
Right.
That they already, everybody already read in sixth grade, you know?
Yeah, I mean, this is going to be an ongoing challenge. For example, when you look at Ishmael Bay's Long Way Gone.
Sure.
Ishmael Bay comes in November, you know, we find out in late October and then we get a set of two hundred books donated. So we do have to go, we do have to establish a process for that.
Yeah, I mean, we, when the, the, the library rejects things, people clear out their home libraries and they try and take to the library and unload it, and they don't want them, so we don't, we don't have to be that next dumping ground.
We don't, we don't want that, no, no, no. You're right, I, I understand that, yeah.
But I'm saying a little more than that, also.
Yeah, I mean, some of these were big book, I'm not going to say dumps, but the other Westmore was about eight hundred copies, showed up.
Yeah.
And it's a good book, and it's an applicable book. Uh, but that, that was involved with a, a book visit, you know, an author visit that didn't materialize.
Yeah.
Uh, and we were, we were donated those books. The same thing, uh, you know, similarly, citizen and.
Well, and it's a good book, but is there a better book? Or is there something that's, you know?
Right, it was a free book.
Right.
That was very popular at the time.
And that's not one of the boxes we tick on that, on your checklist, right?
I agree, nor would we say no necessarily to a popular text, right.
But again, is that the most challenging? Does it fit with our equity guidelines? Does it accomplish what we want it to accomplish, aside from the fact that it's free? So, that's all.
Other questions, Jude?
Jude.
Pete, can you give us some sense of the process for evaluating whether or not a book is culturally relevant and, and accurate?
Sure, I mean, it depends.
So that something doesn't slip through, that's totally off and.
Right, I mean, most of the books on here. Right, I mean, most of the books on here, you know, you have summer read books and things like that which are picked by committee, you know, and large summer read books, like Drowned City was picked by a committee for a summer read. March Book One, again, picked by a committee. For general textbooks, though, if you back up to general textbooks, one of the things our staff does is they'll do a windshield survey where they'll flip through the book, they'll make sure that there's representation in the pictures and the illustrations, they'll make sure that the text is written at the appropriate level, that it, and this is not to say that books, you know, there was a speaker here from a fan talk who talked about our US history textbook, that's one of the most widely adopted textbooks in the country, has some challenges, right, along those, along the lines of, you know, being representational in the story it tells around, I can't remember off the top of my head, but certain, certain very important topics in history. Our teachers were aware of this, obviously, and it supplemented it over the years. But things like that are, those become difficult to navigate and are really left to the supplementation.
Other questions? I love looking at the list of books because I automatically think about which ones I've read and thinking of some there that I didn't quite get to, so.
The Illustrated Theater Production Guide? One I haven't gotten to. But yeah, exactly.
Right, thank you, thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right. So I'm gonna wait for
You're next.
You are next.
We have it.
All right, Dr. Beavis, do we have any comments from the public?
We have no comments from the public this evening.
All right, so we have, we're at item number 12, list of FOIA's?
Yes, we have seven FOIA's from Carstich, Pence, Meadows, Kimmel, Garcia, Wilburn, and Richards, and they're in your packet.
Okay, thank you. All right, board committee reports? I don't know if we had any board committee reports.
I do.
Oh, Pat.
Okay, so Gretchen, you can do cleanup when I'm done, but, and Mary. So I attended the EdRed meeting on March 1st, and Sarah Hartwick, who's the executive director, did a nice update, a quick update of several legislative matters. And I encourage, if you don't already, read her updates, they're really good, and they're really succinct and give good information. So Lisa's really good about forwarding those to us. So real quick, there were, there's a bill in the Senate, being considered in the Senate, for a five-clock-hour requirement, which I think Gretchen spoke about earlier, basically saying that kids have to be in the building five hours solid to count as an instruction day. And I think in part because of EdRed, there have been some, there are some exceptions being discussed that are applicable to tonight's presentation, dual-credit classes, supervised career development, apprenticeships, blended learning programs. So they're looking at some of these exceptions, which would be important for ETHS kids.
And just to interject quickly, that five-hour used to be the requirement until just a year ago. And then there was a bill last year that took that away, and that was troublesome for some people who, in districts where that might be seen as an opportunity to short-change kids in some way. So that's why the law came back, but then to give the flexibility, EdRed has had that voice, so.
And this legislation would also include the e-learning for emergency days that we've talked about and just tested recently, and allowing two of the 176 school calendar days to be used for parent-teacher conferences. And so they're waiting to see formal language, a formal draft. Another bill in the House, or a potential bill, it looks at education support service personnel who are rift, meaning let go, and then rehired within the first year. First, Mary and I had a question about who are these people exactly, which wasn't quite clear. But secondly, these people would be let go, and then within a year, they would come back and get the same benefits and salary they had when they were rift. And so the EdRed has some concerns about this needing some limitations and the issue of non-tenured and tenured people getting the same rights. So they're looking for clarification on implementation, and actually, EdRed is opposed to this officially. There's a couple of bills related to the physical education that look at upping the amount of minutes per week for physical education instruction. It would go to 150 minutes for elementary schools and 225 minutes for middle and high schools. And so there's some conversations with legislators around this to get some clarity. Just a factoid that the Heart Association only recommends 150 minutes for all age groups, so just a little tidbit. And then the Performance Evaluation Reform Act, there are actually four bills around this, three in the Senate, one in the House. And across all of those bills, there were three issues that kind of come up. One is a change in the number of ratings for teacher evaluations, going from four to two ratings. Second, the removal of student growth as a factor in teacher evaluation. And third, extending evaluation of excellent and proficient. And one of the concerns is that if you, well, first, districts would be able to have the number of ratings they wanted, but the state would only recognize two, effective and ineffective. And so raises the question if someone's on a remediation plan, how that fits in. And so it, it's, there are some concerns there about that legislation. So that's, EdRed is working on that. The property tax bill, we got some follow-up on that, and EdRed really wanting to educate legislators on the importance of understanding the impact of the new school funding formula combined with a potential tax freeze, particularly on districts like ETHS. So our funding is flat under the evidence-based funding, and if our enrollment were to decline, funding would decrease with the evidence-based formula. But if we had a tax freeze on top of that, we would have no opportunity for increase in revenue. And then we'd have these contractual, you know, teachers' contract and others, contractual requirements to pay increased salaries, but our revenue, we would have no opportunities for new revenue. So it really would squeeze districts like Evanston. And then finally, she talked about the debt extensions. So we're, as we've talked about when we do the levy, we are subject to the property tax extension limitation law, which caps how much our levy can increase. And this has an impact on capital needs particularly. So our debt service levy is capped so that we have to wait until we have the capacity to go back for money for capital needs. We basically have to pay off old bonds so we can, you know, go for new ones. And even though ETHS is very fiscally responsible and we're in AAA rating, we can't issue more debt because of these limitations, even if we need, we have the need and the means. So there's some discussion around speaking to legislators about loosening up or modifying these limitations. And then lastly, we had a report from Stanford Children, the Illinois chapter of the national organization. And they're trying to, they're kind of coming up with an idea of how to fund teacher pensions through, and using the evidence-based formula. So their idea is to provide funds to cover pensions in the district's base funding from the state. So the problem for a district like ETHS is that this year, because of the hold harmless provision, or the first year, we would, we would get the full amount to cover the pension contributions that align with our salaries this, that first year. But moving forward, because we are in a tier in the evidence-based funding formula, that basically we wouldn't get additional money. So years would go on, we would increase salaries for teachers, pension costs would go up, but we would get no additional money. So seems like a cost shift, even though they said it wasn't. So anyway, this isn't a bill, it's just an idea that they're cooking up. And then the other committee that I'm on, the curriculum forum that I went to on March 5th, we just talked about, Pete did a good job of summarizing, so you all know about that. But I think what was interesting, and it goes a little bit to Jude's question, was really interesting to see how our staff worked together and work as a team. They ask really good questions, whether it's a book for a history class, an English class, there was a book on automotive, like fixing your car, there was a piano book, and everybody really chimes in and has really good questions. And they also really do a good job just watching the sort of play out, the, looking at literacy and social-emotional issues and equity and other values and how that relates to this work. So it was just how it integrates into their deliberations and our work. So it's just, it's just really neat to be there and see that as it happens. So I, just backing up Pete's presentation, it's a very thoughtful group and a very thoughtful process from what I can tell, so, thanks.
Great, thank you.
I would just point out with respect to that pension proposal, that if it looks like a duck and walks like a duck and quacks like a duck, chances are it's a cough shit.
I agree with you, I agree with you.
Everything they do is trying to shift that, get that off the state's budget.
Yeah, there was a lot of question, like, well, wait, isn't that a shift? No, 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 it's not a shift, it's a, you know, so I mean, in fairness
It is, it is.
Right, 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 so, yeah.
Tell me, thank you for your comment. All right, we are at student board report. Phoebe?
Okay, so Pat touched on this a little bit, so the e-school day was on February 22nd. There was a survey that was sent out to students after that, and that was due last Friday on March 8th. I'm a little curious about how that student survey went, but I can say that overall, the student consent seemed to be, that the work that was given wasn't too much, and it also wasn't more than would be expected from if that class day would have happened. The only thing that did happen was that teacher assignments and, like, specifically the due dates varied anywhere from, like, it's due when this class, like, the class period normally would be over, like, on that day, on that Friday, to Tuesday the following week. So, and like, students didn't really seem to be thrown off by that inconsistency, but just like, in an effort to reduce, like, overall confusion, I think that for students, consistency is preferred. So in student union specifically, we're continuing to work on the tardy policy, and we have begun to prepare a proposal, well, we've continued to work on the proposal. Basically, that specifically, that outlines specific drawbacks that we have identified through talking with other students and just like, general consensus throughout the student union. And then also, like, in that proposal, we're like, giving policy solutions that we think will address, like, directly address these drawbacks. Another project that we're working on is a sophomore race conference, so, and that kind of continues the conversation that Calvin Terrell brings to freshmen. So right now, like, the, we talked about Wild Kid Futures Day when that came up earlier this year, and how the freshmen are really, really lucky to get that Calvin Terrell experience. And then for sophomores, they do the career clusters, which is very important. But I think that there's kind of like a disconnect between the conversation that happens for freshmen and then what sophomores, the content that they're receiving, not only during that career day, but also just like, a lack of continuance of that conversation. So the logistics of like, how we would do this are completely like TBD. But there are a lot of students in student union who are passionate about seeing this conference happen and continuing that conversation that Calvin Terrell has with freshmen regardless of what form that takes. One other thing that student union was approached with is Grace Naquin, who's a senior at ETHS. She approached both the administration and student union with an idea. She also approached her alderman, Tom Sufferton, she like, she's really out there with it. Basically, just on an idea to present staff with a program kind of similar to Beyond Diversity, but for gender equity, which would include all gender identities and how they are affected in the school system in a very deeply rooted patriarchal society. So, and, right, she's gathered a group of six students, I'm one of those students. All of these students have gender identities that are not male, and this group is planning to meet with the administration this week, I think on Wednesday. Yeah, mhm, yeah, to present their goals and just like, the overall mission of like, or vision of what the program would be. Grace has a lot of good ideas, she's like, she's really into this. And we're hoping that we can get underclassmen who are also like, passionate about taking this on and like, seeing it through after seniors graduate, go their separate ways. So outside of governmental things, the spring sports are beginning, lots of sports have their first games tomorrow. I personally will be watching the Badminton home game, so go Badminton. I highly recommend that students, staff, families, and community members attend the spring sports games, and especially attend the female sports games with just as much enthusiasm and support as the male sports games. So again, quick plug to the girls' badminton game, because it's the only start time I know on hand, but it's in Beardsley at 4:45, so. I love Badminton, I got into it last year, so, it's, anyway, okay. Outside of ETHS, I talked about this a little bit, but there's the North Shore Association of Student Activists, and that's a group of students from ETHS, from Glenbrook South, Niles North, we got a student from Beacon, there's students from North Shore Country Day. And so far, they've raised $458 to fund a location, so Space in downtown Evanston, and other additional, so, other additional costs to host their first annual showcase that will display activists through different art mediums. So it's like an activist art showcase. So ETHS photographers, poets, singers, dancers, and painters have already signed up, as well as other artists from Glenbrook South, North Shore Country Day School, and Beacon have also signed up for that. So also NASA, which is the acronym, recruited ETHS senior Leah Brieva to make a poster for the event. She did an amazing job, it's, it's really good, and she'll also be submitting artwork for the showcase. The date for that event is Sunday, April 14th, at Space, from 11:00 to 12:00 PM. It is not lost on me that NASA is going to have their event in Space, that was completely accidental, it's super exciting. Anyway, so our next board meeting is the Monday before the event, so I'll be sure to remind the board and the community about this event and drum up support for this whole North Shore community event, so, excited about it. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Witherspoon?
I'll go fast, Phoebe, you went fast, but you just had a lot, good job. I'll try to go a little faster, just because all this is on our website, and I'm just trying to lift them up if anybody wants to, be sure they check them out. We have a fan event on Wednesday, that'll be March 13th. That'll be John Gottman and Julie Schwartz-Gottman on marriage and family issues, and we invite the public to come to that. Our renowned writer showcase, it'll be March 14th, 15th, and 16th, that would be later this week. I encourage folks to make plans to go to that. We've already heard about our Career Options Night, and I want to just lift that up again for folks. The Mayor's Summer Youth Employment Program is going to also be on March 16th, that's been mentioned already. Want to point out that our District 65 and 202 Jazz Band Day is going to be next week on March 18th, and that's held in the Upstairs Theater. Our Solo and Ensemble Festival will be then held on March 19th in the auditorium. And looking ahead a little farther, but before our next board meeting, the All Acapella Concert will be held April 7th in the Upstairs Theater. Just a couple of reminders, parents, if you want to be a parent ambassador, you have another week till March 18th. You can apply to or put your name in to join us with that, and we encourage parents to consider that. Our summer school registration ends March 22nd, did I say summer school registration ends March 22nd? That's how far along we are already in that planning. And finally, and probably the very most important thing that I would need to mention tonight, Phoebe, is spring break will be Monday, March 25th through, I'm sorry, it'll be, I gotta say that differently, March 25th through the 29th, but this is something I want to point out. All offices are closed, and beginning at 6:00 AM on Monday, March 25th through Wednesday, the facility is closed except to essential personnel, so we can get some facilities projects done. So that first three weeks of spring break, the facility is closed.
Three days. You said three weeks.
Make it days? Maybe that's wishful thinking on what I think the length of spring break may be, and, and since I'm doing so well, that concludes my report.
Yes, three days, three days. Okay.
Good enough.
Thank you, Dr. Witherspoon. So we are in the action section. The first action is approval of days of remembrance of victims of the Holocaust, and I believe Phoebe is going to read that for us.
Holocaust Remembrance Days, April 2nd through April 5th, 2019. Whereas from 1933 to 1945, six million Jews and five million clerics, communists, dissidents, Roma, gays and lesbians, disabled people, Poles, Serbs, and Jehovah Witnesses were murdered in the Holocaust as part of a systematic program of genocide. Whereas the students and staff of Evanston Township High School should always remember the atrocities committed by the Nazis so that such horrors are never repeated. Whereas the ETHS community should continually dedicate itself to the principle of equal justice for all people, remain eternally vigilant against tyrants and hate speech, and recognize that bigotry provides a breeding ground for tyranny to flourish. Therefore, we, the District 202 School Board, proclaim that in memory of the victims of the Holocaust and in the hope that we will always strive to overcome prejudice and inhumanity through vigilance, education, and resistance, proclaim that April 2nd through April 5th, 2019 be hereby designated as Holocaust Remembrance Days at Evanston Township High School.
Thank yous. Can we have a motion, please?
Move adoption.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Next item is approval of resolution to approve real estate purchase and sales agreement for 1729 Dodge Avenue.
Move adoption.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Next item, approval of adjusted rates for the district's attorneys and auditors.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
I, I just have a question before the vote.
Yes.
Could we get, you know, I, when we've talked about our legal bills in the past, I, I've never seen, um, and forgive me if I missed it, a, a summary of our fees and a comparison from year to year, any sort of breakdown. So, you know, Franzick has been our lawyers, I think, the entire time I've been on the board, which is almost 10 years, right? Um, and I, I, it, I think it would be helpful, um, for the board to see, and, you know, I'll go ahead and vote yes. I assume people are going to be in agreement on this relatively small increase in our fees, but, um, it would be helpful to know, given the amount of money that we spend on legal fees is, is significant. I mean, it's, it's in the, I mean, we spend thousands, you know, our fees range from 20 to 35,000 a month, which, you know, over the course of the year, that adds up, right?
Summer months are sometimes a little less, but you're definitely.
Good point, good point. But, but during the school year, um, you know, Pete shared with us the breakdown on, on our textbook purchases and how that's looked over the years, but I've just never seen it for our legal fees.
So let me, let me ask you a question. The, the one thing that I do know off the top of my head is I went back to 2011, um, which was when we went through a whole process and...
A new fee agreement.
And, and the rates were $260 an hour for partners. That has now only gone up to 287 years later. So I'm not clear, do you want to see, um, rates or actual expenses?
I, you know, I, I think it would be useful for us to understand, as we're making decisions about whether, number one, to retain the same lawyer, and number two, to give them an increase, as modest, and, and I agree that this is a modest increase, um, to have some sense of what our legal fees look like globally over, over time. I mean, we do that for a lot of other expenditures, and I think we should, as a community, given the size of the, the bill, that we should take a look at that, just so that we have some understanding about what we're spending our money on.
Okay.
That's all.
So there's a motion on the table. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Yes?
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, the next item is the Consent Agenda, and I'm gonna pull out the stipends, which is, uh, G2, the second bullet point. I'm just gonna pull that out. So the Consent Agenda, Approval of Textbook Adoption and Deletion Proposals, Approval for 2019 Asbestos Abatement Bid, Approval of District Landscaping Services Bid, Approval of Minutes from February 25th, 2019, Closed Session Minutes, and February 25th, if I didn't say that correctly, I meant 25th, uh, 2019 Regular Meeting, Treasurer's Report 2000, from January 2019, Approval of Bills, Personnel Agenda, which includes appointments to staff exempt and certified, Change in Status, Educational, Resignation Operations, Retirement Certified, Other Suspension, and, do we have an addendum?
Yes.
Addendum, which includes Appointment to Staff Operations, Change in Status, Stipends, Resignation Operations, and Other Salary Approvals for Administrators and Exempt Staff.
So move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, and then, um, we're gonna go back to that Change in Status stipends. Can we have a motion for approval, please?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Abstain.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes. All right, we are at old and new business. Do we have any old or new business to share?
I have a shout-out. Does that...
A shout-out, yes.
Okay. So I want to give a shout-out to the ETHS mock trial team that this weekend came in third in the state, uh, chan- championship, which means they go on to nationals, I believe, right? And not only did they win, but they won with, I think it's almost all freshmen and sophomores. So it's definitely a rebuilding year, and they did better than a lot of the previous classes have done, and it was, it's a huge deal. So shout-out to all of those great kids.
Wonderful, wonderful. All right. Any more polling of the board? I guess that's where we are. If not, we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned at...
9:18.
9:18, all right.
Too high.